We'll call the Town Council Meeting to order for Tuesday, March 20th, 2018. At 7:06 PM. First start with salute to the flag.
(inaudible). (inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Duty.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Here.
Counselor Candelora.
Here.
Counselor Diamond.
Here.
Counselor Fawnin.
Here.
Counselor Miller.
Here.
Counselor Rose.
Here.
Counselor Zampiano.
Here.
Okay, we'll move into minutes of previous meeting. March 6th, Water Pollution Control Authority and Regula Town Council. Motion to approve the minutes.
Summum.
Second.
Seeing none, roll call.
Mayor Duty.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Candelora.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin.
abstain.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
And Counselor Zampiano.
Yes.
Okay. March 13th, 2018, Budget Workshop. Motion approved.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mayor Duty.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Candelora.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin.
abstain.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
And Counselor Zampiano.
Yes.
Next is, we're moving into Regula Town Council Meeting. Reports of Committees, Boards, and Commissions. First is Economic Development Commission.
No report.
Park and Rec Nation Commission.
Their next meeting will be a special meeting on Wednesday, March 28th. Six o'clock at Stanley T. Williams.
Police Commission.
The Police Commission met on March 12th. You all got a copy last week at the budget meeting in terms of the vehicle report. It was bit high, 2693. The Commission also signed an agreement with East Haven and they're going to locate a backup computer at the East Haven Police Station. I know that's something that even more than I think that it was checked out by our town attorney and they did sign that on March 12th. Mike Paulus came and talked and gave information about the information he's gathering for requirements to have perhaps a uniformed police officer or a flagger at sites and certain road constructions. I guess that's still a work in progress because I think it affects our ordinance. And the last thing is the Commission would like to develop bylaws for how their meetings are conducted. I guess some boards do have bylaws and they are looking into that and they, Mike's been very helpful in finding some samples from other towns and I know that the Police Commission is working as a group to try to come up with something on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Board of Education, Town Council Communications Subcommittee. The Fire Commission, there was no meeting, so.
There is no meeting.
Town Planning Goals Subcommittee.
The Committee's meeting next week at 6:15 prior to the Town Council meeting.
Next is Public Sa- Town Planning Goals, Public Safety Communications Committee, no meeting. Planning and Zoning Commission.
No meeting. They didn't have a quorum, but we're gonna fix that tonight.
East Shore District Health Department.
I didn't go our schedule, so.
Okay.
Sure.
Thank you. Moving to the Town Manager's Report. Preparation of Historic Preservation Grant, Auger House.
Sure. There is a memo that Carrie Duquesne has prepared just to indicate that what we'd like to do is proceed with a grant opportunity for assessment of the Auger House. So it would unfold where if we go after this grant, it's a reimbursement, so we'd have to pay upfront and get reimbursed from the state, but basically would allow us to engage an architect to do the survey and historical review, see if it's eligible to be placed on there, which I think it is, we think it is, but that's sort of the point where you have to have a professional come in to do that. And it would allow us to set up for getting on the list and looking at historic preservation funds. However, the caveat is that once we go down this road, you know, there are certain requirements or certain things that you can and cannot do, subject to the state review and historic preservation, obviously. But it's something I wanted to throw out there to see if you think that makes sense in terms of looking at, at least going after a grant and if we can get that, then we can go for trying to get that on the list and then go for actual, you know, bricks and mortar construction, say, you know, any kind of improvements we need to make to the building itself. So that's what we're outlining. It'll take some time. This process doesn't look too involved, the first step. The second step, obviously, and waiting for grant opportunities may take longer, but it also gives us time to sort of develop the long-term plan for what we think we can do there.
So is this a grant that's gonna be written in-house and not with our grant writer?
No, I think we will use, defer to Carrie because I know she's had conversations with our grant writer on this.
Great. So Randy Frank, who the Council had approved to work on grants, would actually write the Planning and Survey Grant for the town.
Yeah, this one Carrie gave it to me, right? She did the first review, looked at it to see if it would be something that, you know, she could handle.
Right, and she laid out the timeline, which is definitely achievable. We would be back to the Town Council in April to give you a resolution to designate Mike as the signator on the grant itself, once Randy Frank finishes it. And then we would submit it in May. We would find out in June if we would receive the grant or not. And then if we were successful, then we could do the survey in the fall. So then we would submit that survey to see if we're eligible to be on the national, or we would go for national and state register is what Randy Frank recommended for the Auger House itself.
So the only money that we would be expending would be the money for the grant writer as we pursue this?
Correct.
What are the limits if you, if it gets that designation? Are there limits into the use of?
I haven't found that out yet, but there are limits. I would believe that it would be kind of any expansion to the existing house. There may be limits on the type of, you know, siding, if we ever wanted to change the siding on the house, but I would think that interior work would be okay, but that's something that I can check into. And I would think that if we did get as far as actually potentially receiving the designation, that we could opt not to get it if we found that it's too restrictive.
Now, does this include the outbuildings as well?
No, it would just be for the, for the house itself at this point. We could look at the whole property if you'd like.
Well, I don't understand how, if we could do that. I mean, are we looking at just designating a building or designating a property?
Right now, we are starting with the house itself because it was built in 1850 and the whole impetus to this was the land trust had interest in possibly using the house and then it was a question of where we were going to get funds. Historically, Carol Zeb, the prior planner, was successful in getting a grant for renovating the milking barn. So that was through a farm, a farming grant, which we could apply for, you know, going forward if we needed more work on that property, but, or that building. But if you'd like to look at the whole, are you suggesting to look at the whole property or just the building?
Well, I'm more worried about what the restrictions are when we, when and if we get such a designation. You know, if the land trust wants to use the building, then the building has to be habitable. If the building is designated a historic site, then there's, there are a lot more restrictions. And I don't know the extent to which those are gonna impact. And I was worried in reading the memo that there's a funding cap and I don't know if we would be able to do all that work that needs to be done on it under that funding cap and have it be, have it adhere to historic preservation requirements.
So the funding cap, you're talking about the subsequent, if we get the designation for the historical, right? So the initial grant for the Planning and Survey Grant is only $5,000 to $20,000. That's just for the survey work, as Mike mentioned. Then it's the future work. The restoration grant that I've been looking at is strictly for outside, so roof replacement, siding. I don't know that we could use it for interior work. But that's something, again, we would have to get that, that initial designation in order to even be eligible.
And by having it placed on the national historic, if it's eligible for that, does that open up more funding opportunities?
Yes.
And because now it's national versus just state?
Yes.
So the bidding or the grant funding cap, 50,000, is that just for the?
That's for the next round.
It's the next round, it's not the architect or the survey.
Right. Right. That's only 5,000 to 20,000 and that's just really to cover the cost of an approved architect or surveyor to actually do the historical research.
And is there any matching from the town to that?
There is matching and that would be the grant writer's time. And there is the potential for waive, having that match waived because we're a municipality, but Randy Frank thought that it could help us, give us kind of extra bonus points if we just pay for it and not ask for that reimbursement or that, that match to be waived.
Thank you.
Thanks, Carrie. Next item is Potato and Corn Festival, 2018, request to hold special event with beer and wine.
Yes, on this one, I just wanted to bring it to your attention that the committee had, had come to me and requested that, that they want to do this event and this event being a beer and wine tasting event within the Poco Festival on a Sunday event. And so I'm researching this and make sure, I think what I'd like to do is bring this back for the April meeting to have the Council as a body authorize and okay this. I think it comes at the recommendation of the full Rec Commission as well, but I'd certainly defer to Deputy Mayor Angeloni on that because I haven't been at the meetings, but my understanding is that it's, it's, it's been voted or it's been approved, that's something that they want to do. I'm just checking the insurance liability and Liquor Control Commission in terms of making sure whatever permitting and necessary requirements we have to do, we'll do, and then I can bring that to the Council for approval at the next meeting, unless you think it's a bad idea.
Well, I can tell you from the discussion that they've had at the Park and Rec meetings and at the Poco Fest meetings that have started, what this is, and I believe it's Alex DiFrancesco that has brought this. He had brought this up last year, but there just wasn't enough time to start it. And so we had the beer and wine just at the night before the kickoff, when the EDC did a thing. We had beer and wine that night and then they were gonna put stuff together for this year. And what they're looking to do is kind of have like a tasting where people would buy, you know, get a wristband and buy for so much, that hasn't all been established what the dollar amount would be, but it would, they would go into a designated area that is, you know, policed by people so that you don't have underage people in there. And it would be a beer tasting and wine tasting from local breweries, wineries in the area. So they're getting together all of the specifics as to how that exactly would be handled. And I know they had talked about that they wouldn't be selling alcohol. It's just, you know, let's say it's $20 and you get to taste X number, that gets you so many flights or whatever. And it would be very controlled. So they're in the process of putting all of that together. I thought that they were gonna have some kind of presentation for tonight, but did you just back that off because you're still gathering information?
Exactly.
Okay. So that's the premise and, and they were thinking of having it on the softball field because that is all, you know, like a tent, a designated area in there because that is all fenced in. So it's much easier to contain and to check and everything. And it would just be another draw on Sunday. What they're looking for is something on a Sun, on Sunday afternoon to keep the crowds there on Sundays also to the end of the festival. So it'd be a very limited time.
Thank you. Next is Discussion of Brush Drop-Off at Public Works for Storm-Related Events.
Yes, as you know, we've had several nor'easters and storm-related events that have generated a lot of calls to Town Hall about whether or not we were going to take brush or can we, can we help out. So in talking with both the Hazways or actually combining with the scheduled leaf drop-off, which is what we put on our recycling sheet every year, and talking with Fran Marola about coordinating, we can and would be able to accept drop-off for brush on the first two weekends for the 7th of April and the 14th of April, for two consecutive Saturdays for anyone that needed to clear their, their yards and so forth, but we just would restrict it to, you know, residential, no, no commercial or vehicles, trucks, or contractors. And it would be just going down the same time you would do, if you would, you know, dropping off your leaves, you'd do the brush. So just wanted to bring that to your attention. I think it'd be, you know, a great service for residents to get that, some of those big tree limbs and other brush items that's littered their yards.
Thank you.
And I just, last item was just, there's a lot in your folder with respect to budget items. There's also pictures on the lift that was discussed at the library at the last meeting and also pictures from the fire on the roof at TVS that took place this weekend, so. And also a, I think some information there about a solar project that is going on in North Haven. They came to, for the record, to speak to the town about the, the trigger is, I think it's within a certain boundary, so they're, by law, they have to talk to a budding neighbors. And the solar project in that sense is an old cemetery on, on, near the North Haven, North Branford line. And it just got the, it just got us thinking about talking with folks like that to see if there's any possibility for something that might work within the community here in North Branford. So Carrie and I are reaching out and we'll have a meeting next week with some individuals within the industry to, to look at evaluating North Branford for any potential opportunities. And that's, those are just, you know, informational points and I'd be happy if there's any questions on any of those items, but there is quite a bit of information in your folder.
Anything new on the lift?
Yeah. Yeah, it's worse than I thought. So.
It's, it's clearly just a wheelchair lift. It's got a sticker on it that says it's a wheelchair lift, not a freight lift. Unfortunately, not moms with strollers and not anybody else. If you're not in a wheelchair, you can't go in that lift for our liability or the way those lifts work, you know, there's a, there's a car, so to speak, that the wheelchair rides in and it has side panels up to a certain height, so a person in a wheelchair can't get their arm or hands or fingers caught in the, between the car and the wall. So you shouldn't be in there standing up. So I know I've talked with Michael, I've talked with the building official and between, they were deciding which one of them was gonna tell the librarian the good news. I'm still baffled as to how it ever happened. We spent $5 million on a library and how that is the lift we ended up with. The only thing I can say with confidence is, I wasn't on the council that.
What about the latch or whatever that was broken?
We're working on that. So trying to figure out if we can get a different manufacturer that works, so. We should start saving money to put an elevator in there.
Can an elevator go in that space?
It, it could go in that space. It wouldn't be easy. It'd be about 175,000. So would've been a lot cheaper when we were remodeling the library. But these lifts are only made, you know, that's the other thing too, it's probably the door latch has been getting used more than, than it's designed for. So that's where we're at.
So basically, it's not functioning now?
No, it functions now, but it just breaks a lot.
Okay.
Handle's getting overused. Next item is Community Events and Presentations. Award for Years of Service. I have an award here for in recognition of service to the town of North Branford presented to Daniel M. Arman. This commendation is hereby given in recognition and appreciation for years of service and contributions to our community. First is Water Pollution Control and Town Council from 2/24/15 to 11/10/15 and from 11/10/15 to 11/7/17. Next is Economic Development Commission from 10/4/11 to 12/13/15. Finally, Hazardous Waste and Recycling from 5/20/08 to 9/28/11, presented by the Town
Dan, on the back it says, "You're not done yet."[1325.15][1325.15](laughter) Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Take your daughter home, stop being abusive parent.[1331.15][1331.15](laughter)
And next is in recognition for service down in North Branford, presented to R. Chris Mana. This commendation is hereby given for your recognition and appreciation for years of service and contribution to our community. First is Water Pollution Control and Town Council from 11/10/15 to 8/28/17. Next is East Shore Health District Board of Directors from 2/20/16 to 8/28/17. Finally, is Board of Education from 12/10/07 to 12/111, presented by the North Branford
I just have one thing under Community Events and Presentations. The Alan Davis Shining Star Dinner that was scheduled for tomorrow night has been rescheduled to April 11th due to the impending storm. And also, one of the honorees works for Public Works and he would probably be out plowing along with some of the people that wanted to attend. And I know Mr. Potter's here tonight and he's also one of the honorees. So it has been changed to April 11th, same time, 5:30 at Woodlands.
Thank you. Next item is Citizen Statements, Petitions, and Correspondence.
Yes, thank you, Bill Savistano. I'm representing the Solid Haz Waste and Recycling Committee. April 21st is Earth Day, everybody's familiar with Earth Day. And this year, the town of Branford, myself and Anna personally have been designated by the Haz Waste Commission, couldn't be anywhere. But we have, you know, initiated a town-wide event for Earth Day this year. And we're gonna take the benefit of Little League Opening Day and we asked them, we're gonna take some positions on the field outside of tents and have several displays and tents. And I use this to go around town and we've got probably two to three dozen vendors we've already talked to. People use eco-friendly products, some farmers that grow natural products, anybody like that, a person like the squeaky car wash that recycles water. It's all earth-friendly, recycling, solar power. And the, the town-wide event, we've also asked the firemen, I've been visiting the firehouses, so each one of the firehouses is gonna bring their engines on, wash them up. They're gonna, if anybody, any of the firemen themselves have things they do on their own, you know, a lot of these guys are hunters or whatever, they do, landscapers that use eco-friendly material. So we're gonna have like a table and tent and some of our other vendors are gonna sit in with them. Maybe there's maybe two or three tables at each firehouse. And that's the whole idea about the townwide event. So I was a little late in getting the package, our actual invitation letter in your packet, but we'll be here by the next meeting. I'll probably say something at the next meeting. And questions at all. Looking forward to it. I've also asked the, our own town departments, meaning like the engineers building our inter-rack planning and zoning, to sort of like talk amongst themselves so they could probably get all on the one tent and then we can have the vendors in the other, the other tents.
Thank you.
Another thing I wanted to talk about was the agenda. The agenda for tonight, what you have in front of you, we don't see it sometimes on Friday and more recently it's been on Monday and I guess that's the way the process is. But over and above the agenda that you have, which doesn't say a lot as far as we're concerned, because the all the materials in the backup or the, the agenda pack, which we don't see at all unless we make a trip to the library or the Town Hall. Now, if the agenda is ready on Friday and the pack is ready on Friday, nobody's here at the Town Hall on the weekend to sort of read it. I don't read everything in the packet, but I think for the, for the benefit of the citizens, I think it should be more available to them. So if it doesn't reach the libraries until Lauren is able to pick it up and actually physically bring it to them, it's sometimes late Monday and depending on how busy she is, Tuesday morning. That doesn't give the residents enough time to read what we need to read or if we need to read. My idea is, you guys got tablets, let's put one more and, and download it or whatever term you wanna use on, on the website. So I can read it at my leisure home. I don't have to go to the library in between their hours and get rushed, rushed through it, because I've got things to do too. I think it's a good idea. It's fair. Ultimately, if you wanna talk about the budget for next year, it wouldn't be a bad idea to have a nice monitor up here. You could have one of the, one of our seniors, maybe from the high school, could scroll it down as we go through the meeting and meanwhile, the people at the meeting will be able to follow along just like you do up there. Sounds fair. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Any other citizen's statements, petitions, correspondence?
Seeing none, we'll move on. Resignations and Appointments. Appointment of Fred Auger from the Police Commission to the Pension Committee. Term expired 12/1/2019.
Summum.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mayor Duty.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Candelora.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Candelora.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano.
Yes.
Next item is Appointment of Alex De Francisco to the Planning and Zoning Commission, term expired five thirty-one two thousand eighteen.
Second.
Discussion?
Are we putting him on for two months?
It's filling in the term, is that right?
It's filling the vacancy that was created.
Yeah.
For resignation in there.
I have a question, and he's in the room. I thought I had heard you were an independent. It says here you're a Republican. You are.
It should be independent on there.
Okay, so I would make it with that correction.
Any other? Roll call?
Mayor Duty.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Candelora.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, there was a note in our packet here in regards to appointments that were made at previous meetings that we need to correct terms. And the first one is for Steve Scavo, was appointed to planning and zoning as an alternate. And the term of expiration should be five thirty-one twenty twenty, and there was, the wrong term was there. So I would like to make a motion to correct the appointment so that it reads that Steve Scavo is appointed to planning and zoning as an alternate with a term to expire on five thirty-one twenty twenty.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mayor Duty.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Candelora.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano.
Yes.
And the second thing on this note from the town clerk was the appointment of Peter Deo to the Zoning Board of Appeals. He is currently an alternate back mission, but the minutes did not state that he was reappointed as an alternate. So I would like to make the motion that Peter Deo is being reappointed to the Zoning Board of Appeals as an alternate.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mayor Duty.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Candelora.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
And Counselor Zampiano.
Yes.
And just a note to the clerk is that Lisa would like a new letter sent to Steve Scavo with the new term date in there, just so that there's no confusion.
Okay, and also the other.
We might as well do both of them, Peter, yeah.
No problem.
There was nothing changed on his date, it was just that he was an alternate for Pete Deo.
And next we move into unfinished business, discussion in action, approval of proposed ordinance twenty seventeen dash one, title Fire Department Fees Tabled Until July. Next item is Review of Public Hearing Status, fifteen ninety-nine Foxen Road. Sorry. Lucy. Finally is, next is future.
On fifteen ninety-nine, at some point, we're going to have to do something with this. I don't know if the council is interested in doing this. I suppose we need to vote on doing something. So.
George, you think it would be prudent, like we just discussed, the EDC position? Maybe if we, you know, got that going, that could be something that, you know, the EDC could work on, you know?
Well, the EDC already worked on it.
Yeah, I know, but now that we are creating a position, you know, perhaps that would be a good.
Well, what's the, what's the direction?
But I see what you're saying, but I see what you're saying too, we haven't totally finalized.
I mean, there needs to be some agreement on what the direction is and.
Whether open space or whether developed.
Well, myself and the deputy mayor had a conversation about it, and you know, it's, we have to make a decision as to if we're going to put it on the market or we're going to keep it as a park, you know? And we have to do something with it soon.
I kind of agree though, that it might be good if we have a person in the position to get some opinion from that person. You know, it's a fresh eye, somebody looking at it, having some ideas. Person has qualifications in that area, might give us some help and some direction. I mean, we've gone this long.
Sure.
Well, once again, we've
But they can.
We've had, we've had the assessor give us some information, quite extensive information on what the market value would be, how it would affect taxes. We've had at least two townwide hearings on it, following the Economic Development Commission's initiatives for it. And the consensus of, you know, some majority of the citizens was to keep it as a, keep it as a town green. So, you know, unless there's, you know, some other decision being made, I thought that was a decision that the council was going to continue to pursue and respect.
I mean, I think, just my opinion, having like even a set of fresh set of eyes, the CDC director may be working with Kerry or, you know, the town plan.
Well, certainly that changed. A new, a new person comes in, it's a new set of eyes, but at some point, you know.
But yeah, but George, you're still going to have the same scenario, whether it's going to be a park or it's going to be developed. That's not going to change, but.
Well, that's the decision that we need to make.
Right. However, with this person looking at it, I mean, once you sell it, it's gone. And if we do make it a park, it's something that could be sold further down the road. I don't know, waiting a few more months and getting this person on board may not be, you know, a bad thing.
Honestly, EDC Coordinator, her opinion would be sell it.
Possibly, but we've had the ultimate sale anyway.
But. We don't have any money to develop it as a park, so we could say right now, it's a park. And when we talked about this the last time, you brought up all these good points. You know, I think Joe actually said, you know, well, if we're looking at it to be so passive, it's like a gazebo and stuff like that, that doesn't ever interfere in if somebody came along with an offer, just like this building, this building's for sale.
Well, I'm not going to disagree on that.
Someone comes along with the right amount of money, we'll move somewhere else. So, everything's for sale on earth, and so if we wanted to make a park, which I do, you know that, we don't have the money for a gazebo yet, so maybe we need to do is raise money for something like that, you know, from outside of town funds. But I'm, I would still be all ears for somebody coming to say what they could do there, you know? And I'm sure it was Joe that said, well, if you put a gazebo there, you really didn't ruin, make it so you can't sell it in the future anyway, but.
Well, my thinking is, you know, it clearly is something that once it's sold, it's gone. And no matter how much restrictions or controls we try to impose upon it, invariably, somebody has a business need, they're going to change it. We're not going to be happy with the final result. I understand money is always an issue for us. My personal preference, taking money out of the picture for a moment, is to preserve it. There's very little open space on this side of town, and I think it's a benefit to the town, a benefit to the citizens, and it can be a point that can be used out like for the Memorial Day Parade, which on this side of town is taking people's lives in their hands by going out on Route eighty to try to celebrate a national holiday. So, my preference is retaining, but I understand there are economic restrictions that limit our ability to do things like that, and I understand there's no money to pave walkways or put in benches or put up a gazebo, all of which I think would be a positive for the town.
I agree with you.
But I think it, I think it's useful for us to make some form of declaration that we're going to move it off of the agenda as a unfinished, as unfinished business, and declare it as passive recreational space, and we'll develop it as, we'll add to it as, you know.
As we can.
As we can. And once again, if someone walks in with an offer you can't refuse, then don't refuse it. But let's.
All it takes you to make a motion.
I make a motion that we, that the Town Council agree that, and declare that fifteen ninety-nine Foxen Road is open space town property.
I'll second that motion.
You'll get the first park bench.
Maybe we can get it with the plastic recycle.
There we go, all right.
All right, discussion? Roll call?
Mayor Duty.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Candelora.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
No.
Counselor Fawnin.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano.
Yes.
Thank you, George.
Thank you, George.
One thing off our agenda.
Next is Future Budget Planning Initiative.
I got nothing.
Yeah, I'm sorry, there, I don't have any.
On the budget initiative? Well, I guess, like, I don't know if this falls under it, but do you think perhaps we could look at, you know, lease to purchase? Or on the last budget workshop, when the police, when they were talking about cars? And I know in previous years, we did a lease or we did purchase, maybe we could look at some numbers at least.
Right now, it's in there as purchase two. And budget, I believe, we left three or four, we left two or three, I think that's what it is.
Next is Review of Ethics Ordinance.
I'm in the process of just finishing up everything that was sent to us, and I will have something at the next meeting, a suggestion.
Next is Review of Board of Education Rules and Procedures and Policy.
I did leave a message for Attorney Condon today, and I have not heard back from him. I will follow up with him every day between now and your next meeting. Now, either report to you that I've left a message for him every day and have not heard from him, or I will advise you of my discussion with him, whichever it is. For what it is worth, in my unrelated research, I did come upon a case that stands for the proposition that I've been articulating, and that is that there is no such concept as the will of the board without action of the board. And simply stated, this is a quote that I took out of a case that provides it as a well-settled rule. It is a well-settled rule that when municipal councils or boards of any kind are called upon to perform legislative acts or acts involving discretion and judgment in administering the public affairs, they can only act at authorized meetings duly held. The council or board must meet and act as a board or council. The members cannot make a valid determination binding upon the municipality by their assent separately and individually expressed, which basically stands for a proposition that you actually have to have board action at a duly noticed meeting. So that's the proposition that we're starting at. I am simply seeking to confirm whether or not the advice that we've been hearing about anecdotally was actually given by the lawyer to the board members or not. So once I confirm that, I will report back.
And in layman's terms, that would be a vote.
In layman's terms, it means you have to have a meeting like this, that's properly noticed, and an action of the body, and the action of the body is a vote.
And ideally, it should be done before the action is taken, correct?
Well.
Rather than in arrears?
I, yes.
Okay.
If we're dealing with ideals.
Well, I mean, only because it's, that's what got us to this point.
There is a concept of ratification, but yes, I would say yes.
All right, now we get on to bid award, approval of bid number twelve, two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, portable toilets.
Right, there is, this was deferred from the last meeting, it's back for your authorization. There's a revised memo with information from Michelle Knockwood regarding the response and the bidders. What she did was provided additional information in terms of the process for the bids and having a bid bond, but also bond for performance that comes later after the award. She also checked and put her notes in there for the references that she called, and then further detailed the breakout of the type of units and where they'll be used. So it's actually more than an eight-dollar separation from Global to Concan's, Global being the low bidder, Concan's being the second bidder. So it's a difference of, I believe, six dollars separating them and times eight months is a forty-eight dollar difference. The other fact being that Concan's, as mentioned, did not have the bid bond, and in that sense is not a responsive bidder within the context of what we're trying to accomplish here for our bidding purposes. So, the recommendation is to go with, at this point, to go with Global as a low bidder.
And I want to thank Michelle Knockwood for all the information, because it was very thorough. And going through it, I noticed, like, there's three locations, STW, Community Center, TVS, Wall Field, that do not have handicap. And, you know, the other ones do, and I was just wondering if there was a reason for.
I can answer that, I'm not sure as to, I believe that's a Warren decision in terms of the dispersment of those, but in the case of Wall Field, I think we have additional bathrooms there that we built, right? There would be handicap that could answer that.
Yeah, but I mean, the other facilities also have that too.
Yeah, so maybe, maybe the.
Because ironically, if you do the math, it goes the opposite way where the other bidder was actually lower if the other three handicap were at those locations. And being that it's a community center, Wall Field, TVS, I don't know, I kind of think we'd want or need handicap at those facilities. I could be wrong, maybe there's a valid reason, but.
Well, I think some of it has to do with the amount of use at the, like, TVS, they have very little use at those, at that, at that field. They don't have a lot of activities there, and at Stanley T and at Wall Field, Stanley T, when they do have activities, because they're not light, the community center is open, so they do have handicap accessible bathrooms inside of the community center. And like Mike said, Wall Field also does have with the building. So I think in order to.
That'd be Jerome Harrison does too, right?
Yeah, but the school isn't open at night when there's activities there. It's not necessarily open where the Stanley T is, the community center is open, and Wall Field also has the bathroom facility there that's built. So I think it's a matter of keeping the cost down on, I mean, there's facilities at all of the locations.
Yeah, I mean, if you actually did the math, it actually works out where we would save money having, if they had the three, other three. But that's why I'm saying there may have been a valid reason.
But the, but the bid, but the bid would be higher because now you're going to separate.
It would be about a hundred dollars.
Yeah, but a handicap toilet is one twenty versus. Yeah, but a handicap toilet is one-twenty versus a regular, which is ninety, so that's, so if you substituted the, on there, that's thirty dollars a month, times eight months, so that's two-hundred-and-forty dollars, and if you're talking three locations-
Yeah, right.
-on there, so it, so the bid would, it would be a higher bid amount also then.
Right. And then after, if you brought it all the way out, it's a hundred-and-twenty dollars or two, yeah, a hundred-and-twenty dollar difference, additional, I guess. But I was just curious, because of, you know, the lack of three handicaps, as long as recovered for the handicap bathrooms, then that's fine.
So I'd like to make a motion to approve bid number 12, 2017-18 portable toilets, and award it to Global Sites for a total bid amount of ten thousand thirty-two dollars.
Second. Roll call.
Mayor Doody.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Candelora.
Yes.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnan.
Yes.
Councilor Miller.
Yes.
Councilor Rose.
Yes.
And Councilor Zampiano.
Yes.
Okay, we move into new business, discussion in action. Discussion on energy conservation with Mark Deming, extraordinaire.
Mark, yeah, I'm sorry, thank you, Mark. Mark had provided a presentation that we put in the Dropbox, I hope it's also printed at your desk, is that not there, or is in the Dropbox? Is it not printed?
Printed.
It's printed? Okay, yeah, great.
I'm here to talk to you about energy conservation and work that you're thinking about doing in town. And again, where to start? I've gotten some information from Michael, not complete enough to start a project, or to understand where you are. You would need to do three years, a three-year study on your costs, develop a benchmark. If you signed with an ESCO today, you don't know what your benchmark is, you don't know what your savings should be. Ensure that you're paying the correct rates today. On a future slide here, I'll show you that you're probably not. Ensure that you're properly utilizing the tools that you already have at your disposal. Building automation systems, I'm pretty sure that there's an automation system at NBIS, because it was just done ten, eleven years ago. Using timers, photo cells, VFDs, ensure equipment is not being overridden. Address the obvious, missing pipe, insulation, bad or non-existent weather stripping on your buildings. So based on the information that I got from Michael, I just did a quick review of North Branford High School. Your electricity costs per square foot at North Branford High School is a dollar ninety-seven a square foot. Your natural gas costs are sixty-seven cents a square foot. Your cost per KWH is twenty-five cents, twenty-four cents per kilowatt hour. NBIS, electricity cost per square foot, two dollars and forty-one cents. Natural gas cost, thirty-eight cents. There's a disparity here between North Branford High School, natural gas cost, North Branford Intermediate, electricity, North Branford High School, electricity, there's no consistency here. You should be paying a certain rate. Both buildings are million kilowatt hour a year buildings, there's no reason for a disparity in the rates. So cost reduction alone, let's just assume that we got the rate at North Branford High School down to the rate at North Branford Intermediate School. There's thirty-nine thousand one hundred and eighty-eight dollars in savings right there. So the point is, is before you sign with an ESCO, you need to know what's right, what's wrong, first. If I were an ESCO walking in here tonight, I'd see forty thousand dollars in savings, I'd tell you to sign a contract with me for a guarantee of thirty thousand dollars a year, I'd make nine thousand dollars a year for the next fifteen, twenty years, whatever you're paying. A needs assessment. Do you need to rebuild infrastructure? Do you have old boilers? Do you have old roofs? Are you doing this for savings? Do you need new equipment? New rooftop HVAC units? Additional air-conditioned space in the schools? Do you need new pumps? Do you need new lighting? Do you need new roofs? Do you have that assessment done yet? Before you enter into an energy-saving program, what do you want it to pay for? The point is, is to get this equipment that you need and pay for it with the energy savings. So what do you want to accomplish? Again, savings? Do you want to rebuild your aging infrastructure? Do you have environmental concerns? Improved occupant comfort? Improved indoor air quality? Again, you know, why are you entering into an agreement with a company when you don't know what you want? What do you, what's the end game? So electricity savings. You know, first place to go, third-party supplier. You can get a better rate from a third-party supplier than you'll get from the UI today. Do you have one? You don't know. LED lighting, pump efficiency and controls, photo cells and timers, occupancy sensors, are your buildings lit up at night when they're not occupied? Computer monitoring, do computers at the schools go off at night?
Those are all board bed questions, unfortunately.
Unfortunately, it's costing you, though.
Correct.
So natural gas heating, fuel savings, improved purchasing practice. Based on the discrepancy between what you're paying at an intermediate school and what you're paying at a high school, I'd say the purchasing practice could stand improvement. Occupied, unoccupied, temperature setback and zone scheduling, holiday weekend, snow, snow day, unoccupied setback ability, outdoor air resets for your boilers, inefficient boilers or boilers that are at their, end of their life. Then we get into solar, photovoltaics. Do you know if your roofs are structurally conducive to a solar array? If you're going to enter into a kilowatt hour power purchase agreement, what is the kilowatt hour rate that they're going to offer? The decision to outright purchase a solar array or to do a power purchase agreement? One reason not, for a town not to do it is there is no tax incentive for you to do it. There is a tax incentive for a private entity. So I'm here just basically not to tell you that you shouldn't be doing energy conservation. What I'm here to tell you is that you need to do your homework, and a lot of it, before you enter into an agreement with an ESCO. Like I showed you in just a few hours of looking over some paperwork, I could come in here as an ESCO and say I could save you, again, thirty thousand dollars a year, make a few phone calls, get you on a better rate, and I've done my job. And now you're paying me for fifteen to twenty years because I did that. Any questions?
Well, I think one of the disconnects that we have with this, because the school, you know, they occupy much more square footage than town buildings, and as a council, we really don't know the types of things that they have done. I mean, I know that they've done some LED lighting repairs, upgrades at Jerome Harrison parking lot. They've done some things inside of some of the schools. The only thing that we know of, because we approved it, is the new boiler at the high school, but, and the new roofs, which buildings have the new roofs on them. But as far as everything else regarding those buildings, there's really a disconnect between the Board of Ed and the town council, and we really don't know what's going on over there, or what they have done.
Right.
And I know we brought this up in the last meeting or two in regards to the Board of Ed budget, if we can take their energy, their cost of the gas, the heating oil, you know, those things out of their budget and put it over on the town side of the budget, not as a savings measure, but just take it out of their budget so that we have more control of it. And I'm not so sure that we got a clear answer on that, if we can or not, because we weren't, I mean, I know Al brought this up, we weren't looking to promote it as a savings, because we would still have to fund it, but is that a thing that we can take out of, from their budget and put it over on our side? Because that's a discussion the council would have to have.
You're obligated to pay for the amount that's required for educational purposes. This would be likely not specifically associated with the education of the children, so it's likely something you can pull onto your side. However, just appreciate the fact that if you pull a dollar out of their side and put it onto your side, it's going, it's going to cause your budget to increase by that amount, and there's going to be a perception, although not a reality, but a perception that if you're funding them fifty thousand less or a hundred thousand less, that you are taking money away from the Board of Education. So there's a perception issue, not a reality issue, right? So because generally, people will say, well, you've reduced their budget, when you haven't reduced it for education purposes, it's functional, it's facility purposes.
Right.
So I think, yes, you can legally do that, but I think you should appreciate the fact that from a public perception standpoint, it's going to appear as though you're reducing their budget.
Would that be under capital improvement?
Well, it's an operating expense.
Operating expense.
Because it's, it's a monthly, it's, it's-
Because I think if you get it all under one budget, I think you're going to have a better option to buy power, you know?
I was just thinking, if you show a savings, and it's a capital-
You can, you can-
Well, you already have, I mean, Mark's just scratched the surface, and you already have a forty thousand dollar savings, you know?
That's only a perception, though. I mean, if you're saving money, you can end up putting it back in the education.
So I have a question for Mark. So who does what you say we need to do, and what does that cost?
You need to, basically, I've laid this out for you, you need to do a needs assessment, you need to do an audit, you need to go back retroactively, three years, benchmark.
So you're saying that's, all this work can be done in-house?
If it can't be done in-house, then you hire someone to do it.
We have some of it, we have done, we have done the benchmarking for-
That's just gathering data, really.
Yeah. We have the models and, and Anthony, how far back does our, is that-
We can go back to three years.
Three years, yeah, we can go back to three years. So we've laid the groundwork for a lot of it, and, but I think, I just want to interject and say that in sitting with Mark and explaining, okay, we were going down this road with the ESCOs, you know, Mark comes to the table with his experience in other school systems and says, well, you know, help me understand what's different. I think the most valuable piece of information he gave was the fact that in an ESCO, you're going fifteen to twenty years. Why are you going to do that when you can turn around a savings within a ten-year period? And knowing that some of the investment you're going to make isn't going to last ten years, right, or certainly not twenty years, right? So that, I think there's another way to skin the cat, so to speak, in terms of getting to the, but we got, you know, to the goal, but figuring out, okay, energy efficiency, right, and potential savings, I think, should be the, should be the goal. Now, how do, how do we get there? The analysis and the groundwork of benchmarking the buildings is there, and I think now we're, I think we're pretty close to getting to the, to the next step, just, it's going, like Deputy Mayor Angeloni had just said, coordination with the school side in terms of accurately getting the right picture of what, you know, how to prioritize and what, what thing. Obviously, it's the biggest buildings in our portfolio, right, in our profile, so to speak. It's going to be over at the schools, sure, Town Hall and a few other places, but nothing compared to what the schools are consuming in terms of energy. So that's where we have to put our emphasis and our focus on, if we're looking at trying to be efficient and saving money.
Right, we have many, I mean, we're nine volunteers here, you know, approving whether things are done, you know, according to procedure and protocols, we're available. But I, I mean, I look at this, and to me, department heads in whatever the department is, whether it's the Town Hall, whether it's Public Works, whether it's the Board of Education, you know, there's people responsible for many of these things. They should be evaluating this and reporting back to the manager that they report to, saying, here's the situation, and if they need help, they call outside people, and I mean, this is what businesses do. And I think this is, this is a very nice, nice report, Mark, I appreciate it, because this is exactly, you know, what we need to review and push forward. Thank you.
You know, granted, granted, the schools are big, but I mean, the town owns a lot of buildings and uses its fair share of, you know, oil, gas, heat.
Well, each can benefit from the other-
Yeah.
-by bundling this work. And we need to put together a comprehensive package, so that if you have a fire station or a library that needs a new boiler, and an LED lighting project in a large building-
Let's talk about a fire station that needs LED lighting. We faced that. We had a fire station that came to us and said, we want to change all of our lighting, give us this money, we'll go to LED lighting, we're going to save plenty of money. And we just had a presentation for budget, and they said, they didn't save a penny, and in fact, it cost them more, and they don't know why.
Because it was designed wrong.
And they're on-
There is absolutely no way that if your occupancy hours remain the same, and you go from conventional T8 lighting to LEDs, that you will not save money unless you designed it wrong.
And they're on Wallingford Electric. Mark, if I could piggyback on what Al asked you, is there a, to do the whole needs assessment, is there like a protocol, and is that something that you would, you would help us do, I mean, obviously for a cost, but in other words, it sounds like there's a lot there, there must be some kind of protocol that you follow in order to get through all those steps, in terms of a needs assessment.
Basically, it's walking through the buildings, identifying what you have, what's aged, what's serviceable.
But don't you kind of need help, I mean, you do it, what Tom is saying, you use your department heads?
I don't think that's kind of-
You use your department heads, and that's what you get.
Okay.
Because-
Say the example I gave.
You brought it up.
As opposed to, that's what you get.
But maybe we got the wrong people in some places, because, you know, this is, this isn't-
But you have, you have firemen who are very good at putting out fires. They may not be very good at energy conservation. You have librarians who are good librarians, but not-
Right, but that, but that-
So you're answering my question, you really need somebody to guide this needs assessment?
Yes.
You need a head.
That project was designed by an engineer that was approved by Wallingford Electric, so it wasn't a fireman design contract. They went through multiple layers of review, and they're stumped as much as we are with the energy drawings.
Are the lights on longer, or are there lights, more lights outside? Are the lights on longer, or are the lights, more lights outside?
They're going to be on longer, but with LED lighting, as Mark mentioned, the common sense, no rational person will think your bill's going to go up. If you go from X amount of watt to X amount of watt, it's got to be a savings. Doesn't make any sense.
Yeah, so at, at this point, you know, Mark has, has volunteered, I, I don't want to put him on the spot, but, you know, where are we going forward? I'd be happy to work with Mark if he's, you know, willing to continue to work with us. Otherwise, I've got to take it to a point where we're going to be looking for, you know, some type of bid of professional services, unless Mark is going to be generous enough to give us continued support and guidance, technical support. I'm not sure where the council wants to go. We have the basis, as I said, in terms of data, but going to the next level to develop a, a, a need, full-blown needs assessment and, and then plan as to where we're going to get, say, or get, make changes within that.
Well, I mean, as he said in the beginning, you need to figure out where you want to go, where you want to head. So, I think that's like one of the first things we have to look at.
Right, so I've developed projects where we've paid for asbestos in performance contracting. We've paid for roofs through performance contracting.
I mean, didn't you do a roof project in Branford, I think it was?
I did, not, not through energy savings.
No, but I mean, it saved, I can't remember off the top of my head, but...
So, so what do you mean when you say you've paid for a roof through performance contracting? What does that, I don't understand that.
We saved sufficient funds through the bundling of...
Oh, okay.
...an energy plan, so that it not only paid for boilers...
Paid for a capital.
...and pumps, and LED lighting, and building automation systems, but also paid for a roof.
Okay. So by ten...
In le, in less than ten years.
Okay.
So typically, you bond a roof for twenty years. The energy savings from these projects paid for the roof, the boilers, building automation, LED lighting, retrofits, everything. So, having it, having someone say, we did an LED project and we didn't save money, the return on investment, the average return on investment is two to two and a half years on an LED project.
Right, that's what was explained to us.
All right, Michael, why don't you and Anthony work with Mark? And, I mean, if you guys get the intermediate school and the high school electric rate, you already have funds right there. You know, and you can figure out where we're going from there. That was my opinion. I don't know if the rest of the council, how that feels. I mean, certainly, what, the four cents kilowatt hour difference, two schools less than a hundred feet apart, or they're both connected, you know, should not be that much off.
And a hundred and fifty thousand kilowatt hours difference between the two? So they're not on a different rate?
Um, Mark, did, were you involved with the COGEN?
There was no problem before I left.
No, I know, but I mean, it was going, that was very...
Yeah, it paid for, that was a million-two project that paid for itself in less than four years.
Man. And would that be something with the complex that we have to look at, or not big enough?
Typically, you need a heat sink, a huge heat sink, so you need chilled water system in the summer, a, a large hot water demand in the winter, which my Branford High School was a ideal candidate for that. You need heavy use, so heavy occupancy in the summers.
Well, I, I think there's some things that can be done, you know, like just the race and that type of thing, that is not really going to cost us anything to do. But I really think we need a plan of action as to, like, the steps that we're going to, like, what has to be done orderly, and in what order it gets done, so that we can assess how much it's going to cost us and where it's going to fit into the budget and, you know, because some of the things are, you know, like the schools, you know, some of the schools don't have air conditioning. So, to, to put in air conditioning, that probably is not, in a building that's fifty years old, probably is not going to happen on there.
So, but the entire point of doing performance contracting this way is, you don't have to budget for it, your budget's already there. It's utility money, it's savings that pays for the work that you do.
Right, but there's...
So it's no additional budgeting.
But there's some things that will definitely take priority over other things on, you know, like if you need a new boiler at a school to be more efficient, rather than putting in air conditioning in an older building, you're going to do the boiler before you do the air conditioning.
Again, again, each building has to be treated independently.
Correct.
But if you have, you know, thirty window units operating in that building, and it may be cheaper to install split systems in that building and extend the amount of air-conditioned rooms that you have, and still gain savings. You know, you have to treat each building independently, but you also have to bundle all the work to drive the cost down. So you have to look at it in totality, not as individual little buildings. Because one building may pay for the needs of another building.
I think that, I think that if we did that on this building, we would, finally, we'd save some money. The way this system, the system in this building is, is, as we found out this winter, you know, it's, it's dated, to be kind to it.
Well, and I'm sure it's, they're dated in some of the older buil, the school buildings too, that we haven't renovated or anything like that. I'm sure it's the same issue in those buildings also.
But when did you renovate the intermediate school?
Eight years ago. But we, that's been a nightmare since...
And look at the cost of operation in that building.
Yeah, because the system's not working correctly. And hasn't from the beginning.
That, that's kind of the point of my presentation.
Right.
Get what's working, what you have, and use it now, before you sign a contract with an ESCO, who's going to come in and go, you've got this overridden, and it's costing you a lot of money, I just saved you more. Pay me.
So since we're all friends here, could you explain that, the ESCO, you know, a little, because it's like, like we had a presentation here, it's like, oh, no money to the town, it's like, you know, it's one of those things, it's like, well, this is just too good to be true. So how does it work and how does that, how does that group get paid?
So usually, if it sounds too good to be true.
It is. So we, and we didn't, we didn't bite, so...
So you want me to explain to you how an ESCO...
I want to, how does it work?
Basically, the way I laid it out. I'd come in, you have a, let's, for, for easy numbers, let's just say you have a two million dollar a year utility budget. I'm going to do some very quick calculations, figure out how much I can save you over the course of fifteen to twenty years, develop my budget based on that, ensure that I can give you those savings, and do the work, and collect my money. Now, I can guar, like I said before, I could come in here right now and guarantee you I can save you thirty thousand dollars. You're going to pay me forty thousand to save you thirty. Yep, but you only have to pay me ten thousand dollars a year for the next four years to do it. That's how they're making their money. The low hanging fruit is going to be grabbed, and then what are you going to be left with? You're still going to have old boilers, you're still going to have asbestos, you're still going to have roofs that leak, you're still going to have no building automation systems, or you're going to have a building automa, automation system that you've paid for, installed, and isn't being used properly.
Okay. But even if it's installed properly, and our, our, the people who might work here don't understand how to operate it, it's a moot point.
Right.
Because that's what happened.
Right, that's what's happening now.
I mean, that's, that's what got us into the position.
And you must see that too, but some of these systems are way, are a lot smarter than...
Overly engineered.
Right.
You want to turn it on, turn it back, and shut it off. But they over-engineer them? Why? It costs more.
I know. Intermediate school system, that cost.
Oh my God.
It's still costing.
I mean, would it, is it possible to, to, to look at, say, the Town Hall and do a, a small study, or a, a small changes on that and see if there's any savings? I mean, is it possible to do that and make it?
Yes.
So I mean, maybe we should do something like that and say, here's a success, so let's move on to the bigger one now.
Well, you guys, you, you must know, how, how efficient are the units that are, you know, against the outside wall that heat and cool, rather than a...
So you're talking, excuse me, a split system? It's probably thirty to forty percent more efficient than a window unit.
Okay. Yeah, window units are, it's, it's not good.
There are heat loss in the winter.
Yeah.
And you're bringing in outside air.
So the question is, where do we go from here?
Well, that's, that's what Michael and Anthony got to work out and come back to us with.
Well, yeah, it, it, we can work with, I can work with Mark, and we can, uh, work in the development of a master plan or a strategy, a plan of action, um, and maybe...
And see how you could, um, fund Mark's expertise or whatever, if we have to get to that point.
Okay. Yeah, I'm willing to look at it, and then again, I, I think the energy conservation savings is there, and I think we have to understand, you know, like Mark said, there's some, you know, lights of low hanging fruit, all the way up to a, a boiler and a roof kind of thing. What, I think we've got to break it down so we all understand what we're, what we're talking about and how it works.
Especially a third-party vendor for electricity. I mean, that has to be.
Yeah.
You know, and you put every town building on them. I don't even know what the kilowatt hour cost is here.
We have a third-party vendor.
So it's cheaper than twenty or twenty-four?
I don't know the numbers, but we have a third price.
So why can't we get that for the schools tomorrow?
They're on the same plan. I'll double-check it.
Well, they can't be on the same plan because you've got, what, you got a difference in price already.
Look, do we have, are all of our buildings on different prices?
Shouldn't be. I'll, I'll double-check the information tomorrow on the bills.
Probably.
Well, I, I'd still like to know why, uh, we can't solve the, the firehouse problem, you know?
We'd have to have Mark just walk through, and he might be able to, um...
Could be possibly had the wrong numbers to start with. I mean, is anything...
Or there's an extension cord.
Running to someone's house.
A long, very long extension cord somewhere.
But this is his business, this is his knowledge, this is, this is, this is what we need in town.
Right.
All right, thank you, Mark.
You're welcome. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is Bid Award, RFP one, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, Certified Public Account Auditing Service.
Two weeks ago, you folks approved the RFP. We went out, got three responses back, the low bid is a new firm to us. Uh, we did check the references, uh, all very favorable. I did went on the state website and found other towns that they have audited, not on the reference list, checked with them as well, equally as, as very pleased. So the recommendation is to go with the Mashad, Acavalo, Woodbridge, and Cusano auditing firm.
I'd like to make a motion, be it hereby resolved, that the North Branford Town Council awards RFP number one, two thousand eighteen dash nineteen, to Mashad, Acavalo, Woodbridge, and Cusano LLC per their response to the aforementioned request for proposal.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mayor Dudy.
Just before, with that, would anybody in the council like to meet them on the presentation?
That's a bid, a low bid.
Yeah, no, I know, but I mean, just...
I don't think it matters.
Go ahead.
Roll call?
Okay. Mayor Dudy.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Pendelora.
Yes.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Fornin.
Yes.
Councilor Miller.
Yes.
Councilor Rose.
Yes.
Councilor Zampiano.
Yes.
Next is, um, Review and Approve Bid Number Fifteen, Specific for Town, Town-Wide Entrance Signs.
So in your packet is a draft bid for the fabrication, uh, excuse me, the design, fabrication, and installation of the welcome signs to town that we've been talking about over the past few months, as well as the, the park signs. Um, we have in there a bid alternate for a different size sign for the welcome signs, making it six feet wide as opposed to the eight feet, which is what we have now. And then there's also a bid alternate in there for the community event signs. I'm not sure if you have specific questions.
Now, I think the six-foot signs would be a lot better, easier to maintain, less likely to get hit by motor vehicles, as some of our other signs have in the past.
So are they going to do a, a drawing for us to see what the six sign, the six-foot versus the eight-foot? Because I know there was concern about the letter placement on a smaller sign, what it would look like.
So, I, I think that the steps would be that we would first look at the bids that come back, um, so, because we listed them separately for the, the eight versus the six, but we would require, we are requiring, obviously, a design and schematic for all signs before we, before they fabricate anything. Because we want to make sure that the spacing is appropriate.
Correct, okay. And I, I did see in the specs that, you know, it, it's all dependent on the budget as to, you know, what the proposal comes in at, as to whether all of the signs would get ma, made or not on there, which is fine. But I think in the meantime, we need to look to see ones on the welcome signs, because I think there's eight of them, or...
Seven, right.
Seven of them.
Yes.
And I, I noticed, like, coming in from some sections, you know, we already have one of the green signs up that says, welcome to North Branford or whatever, and where that sign is located, I, I think in some areas that is fine compared to putting up one of the lower signs down to the ground and whatever, that may not, you know, there's just not enough room, or it's very condensed in some spots. So we might not need all of the seven signs...
Okay.
So that we can make those decisions. But I know you're having them bid on it, which is fine, but before we award, I think we just need to look to make sure where they are, where they're all going. Because I don't think we need the big signs in seven locations.
Right, right. And we would do a field verification before, um, anything was fabricated and definitely installed as well, because of that point also. And the DOT permitting process would also be required by the...
I saw that.
Designer, fabricating them.
Right. Only because we have so many state highways. A lot of these signs are going on state highway routes.
Right, exactly.
Even the park signs.
And the right-of-way is so wide that...
Correct.
Right.
And who, who's responsible to maintain the event signs? Maintain them, meaning, you know, keep them up to date.
Put the stuff on them.
Yeah, like, like if...
Oh, that's Park and Rec.
Yes.
That's, Warren's office does that on there.
Carrie, I was looking at the, um, uh, bid proposal, and Fran, Fran Marola had some specific concerns about the area, uh, for the concrete at the base, and I don't see that specified within this bid proposal. Did he see it?
He did.
Is, is he satisfied with it the way it is?
It did say one foot around the, that's what he wanted.
I only saw mulch.
No, there was, there was some...
Under, right, under general scope, um, it's the fourth bullet. So all posts attached to the signs shall be installed in a standard concrete footings, a minimum of forty-two inches deep by a minimum of one foot wide.
Page, like forty-three, sorry.
Okay, there it is, okay.
Which is, which is what he wanted, was one foot around the post for the weed whackers and everything, right?
Okay.
The, the other thing is, I didn't see in here, and, and maybe this can be added after, is if we wanted to at some point in time do the, you know, the site maintained by, you know, like, the advertising, that it would be a sign that could be hooked underneath, you know, on the signs, um-
Right, 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 that's not in here.
Okay.
Um, after talking with various communities, and I thought we had talked about this a few months ago, so I apologize if I, I didn't convey this to you, but other communities have gone that route and they've found some challenges with it, where businesses sponsor a sign for a number of years, but then they don't have the funds to do that any longer, so then it's a matter of switching out the signs and getting someone else to maintain it. So, um, if you'd like to do that in the future, I think that we, we could, it just seemed like at this point, just to start with the signs themselves-
Well, I just want to make sure that the sign would be thick enough that-
Yeah.
That would be able to be put on the sign-
Okay.
At a future date, if that's the right way we want it to go.
Okay.
That, that it's, it's a viable option down the road.
Okay.
Not necessarily for this bid, but-
Right.
That we could add it on if we wanted to.
Okay. Um, that's something we can ask them, I think, once we choose a, a bidder.
Okay. So I'd like to make a motion to approve bid spec number fifteen, uh, the spec for the townwide entrance signs, park signs and community signs. Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mayor Judy.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Candelora.
Yes.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin.
Yes.
Councilor Miller.
Yes.
Councilor Rose.
So, I'm going to say yes, um, but then we're going to come back to the concrete footing after we all vote.
And Councilor Zampiano.
Yes.
Too deep?
No, so when you, when you read this, and you're the attorney here, there's attorney down there, but I'm a builder and read this, so you could pour a concrete footing forty-two inches deep, one foot wide, one foot deep, six inches deep. It's not clear that Franny wants a foot of concrete around the post above grade. Do you agree with that? Okay. He, he, he wants it above grade so his weed whackers are hitting concrete, not the post, correct?
Do we have to specify how high above grade?
I don't know.
What does he want, a foot around grade, so that weeds are not growing around the post?
Well, it's both, I think.
Well, Carrie could check with, uh, Franny.
Just check with Franny and make sure that-
And just see how high he wants it, above grade, you know?
If he wants it above grade or with grade?
At grade.
Yeah.
But if you have it at grade, then the, the ground tends to cover it up.
Yeah.
Um, so I would imagine there isn't any problem with going above grade, I just don't know how far. And we have to maintain it, so, you know.
Right. Franny's crews have to maintain it.
That's, that's important.
Right.
Right, um, next is review of, let's see, we, we know about that also. Um, roll call?
Of course you did.
Yeah, we're all set.
We're all set.
Next is review of dra- RFP number ten, two thousand seventeen, two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen Pension Investment Advisor Services.
This is just the first pass that was sent out to the pension committee and you folks, uh, for any comments or questions you may have before we finalize it and bring it back, uh, to send it out on the street. Uh, the first page kind of references the fees from last year. I did go back and check it. On, on an average balance basis, one point three, one point two-five is probably the correct number on an average asset basis, so that's, that's on an annual basis. Uh, but the, the RFP, again, is just the first draft, uh, again, it was sent out to the pension committee members, uh, as well as the town council to have any questions. There was one question that our insurance company is looking at on page three about the insurance requirements. It did raise another question they had about some fiduciary policies that we have or don't have, so it's still a work in progress. I'd come back to you at a later date, but, um, just if anybody have any questions, you can feel free to send them over to me and we'll incorporate them into the next revision.
So when are we looking to get this out?
As soon as I, I haven't heard an ounce of feedback from anybody, so I'm not sure everybody's read it, not read it, happy, not happy, or-
Not happy with the fees, but-
Uh, as a layman, can I ask, are we looking more for, like, an independent type advisor versus, like, a big company like Merrill? Do we feel we do better off that way? Is that part of this?
We're looking for anybody that wants to put a bid in that we have, you know, good results with. It's not precluding any-
Fantastic, we started with a-
Right, it's not, it's not, it could be the small mom and pop, or it could be a, a large broker firm. We, it's just a matter of results.
Obviously, we had a problem with a large firm, that's what I'm just wondering-
Right.
What we're looking for.
We want results.
Right.
Kathy, I, I want to ask a question about this, uh, page on Morgan Stanley fees.
Yes.
Um, I'm looking at, I'm looking at this, and if I understand this correctly, um, it looks like for this one year, this one fiscal year that you give us, sixteen, seventeen, we, we had a, a loss of nine hundred and eighty-seven thousand, four hundred and ninety-seven dollars. A reduction in our assets.
Right, but you can't look at it as a loss. It could have been also payouts of, of pension payments, lumps on payments.
Well-
It's not, not a fair representation to say it's a loss. All, all that difference is not, is not loss, a reduction.
We have a reduction.
Right, right.
And is, is that usual?
That it goes down, yeah, both can't, the employee plan is clo-
We paid, uh, a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars plus-
Correct.
To ma- to manage this, and it, it looks like we're not doing very well at all.
Well, we, we made-
That's why we're looking to change.
We made about a quarter of a percent.
Right.
Yeah, well, I understand that, and, and we paid in fees a number that looks awfully large to me, because, you know-
Right.
I don't pay anything like that in fees.
Sure you do, you just don't realize it.
I don't pay anything like that in fees, and my assets are slightly below these. You know, not a lot below, but they're below.
Well, if you look at the numbers, Anthony, if you look at the police, the town and the fire, the fire went up a little bit, so that, is that, does that-
They're not, not big payouts. Not a lot of folks on pension.
Right, so what I'm, what I'm, what I'm saying is that looks like there's probably payouts of police-
Right.
Yes.
Right, the town.
Right, so you, don't, don't confuse the earnings performance with the asset values, is my point to-
Right.
There's payouts, everything else that kind of factor in.
Have we, have we explored other towns that may, maybe having some success and who they're using?
Uh, yes.
Just curious, you know, I'm sure-
Yeah, there's, there's a couple of firms that, uh, I'm on a pension board with that have expressed interest, they go out to bid on the proposal when it hits the street. Um, there's other folks in Morgan Stanley, other offices that have expressed interest that they would bid when it hits the street, so they will get some interest, I'm, I'm pretty sure, other people interested in bidding on our, our work.
But if you just look, I mean, the average asset balance was roughly twelve million dollars for, for sixteen, seventeen. So even if we made, if we made one percent, it would be a hundred twenty thousand dollars that we would have made on that money. We only made a quarter of a percent, so that means we made thirty thousand, but we paid a hundred and fifty-six thousand in fees.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that's, that's the layman's term of all of this.
Yeah, and, and I'm looking at it and I'm, I'm flabbergasted, I'm embarrassed and, uh, you know, it doesn't, doesn't work for us. We can't keep doing this.
Right, and that's why the pension committee voted to bring it to the town council to say, we need to do something different.
I think it's absolutely cause for alarm.
Hey, you made the motion.
There's no motion yet, because he's still working on it.
Still working on it.
He, he, this is not final yet.
Next is, uh, item is bond refunding resolution to consider and act upon the proposed resolution entitled Resolution with Respect to Authorization, Issuance and Sale and Not, Not Exceeding Ten Thousand, uh, ten million dollars to Town of Branford Obligation Refund Bonds.
Right, as we approached the subject last meeting, there's an opportunity that's arisen to, uh, refinance bonds that were originally issued in two thousand eight for part of the MBIS and library projects. We refinanced them in two thousand ten, and they're eligible again for refinancing now in two thousand eighteen. The cost proposals that were provided, uh, really are date-specific, so what doesn't change is the fee that each of the underwriter will charge us to perform the transaction. So I ranked the fees, uh, based on the number of basis points that they are quoted, and the lowest being Roosevelt and Cross, and ironically, they're the ones that actually refinanced the bonds back in two thousand ten. Uh, so it makes sense kind of to, to stay with them, they are the lowest fee structure. We've worked with them in the past a couple of different times on refinancings, and the recommendation, uh, through our financial advisor, Mark Chapman, uh, discussed it with my, met the manager and myself, recommending we go with Roosevelt and Cross to do the refinancing. To look at, to get more, I know Al had mentioned about some, uh, clarification on it. If you go to the proposal, the little handout that Mark Chapman had prepared, again, it goes, it's about nine, nine point three million dollars. The call feature basically says when the bond is eligible to refinance, uh, net present value of the barometer is about a two percent return, this is five point seven four percent. Uh, is the savings two times greater than the expenses? Yes, it's five point two times greater than the savings, than the expenses, so it, it's, it's a good deal, and we're hoping to get everything closed and, and do the transaction in early May. And I'll report back to the council what the final net savings are when all is said and done.
So the, the final net savings was approximately five hundred and fifty.
About five fifty, but again, that will vary based on when we actually close a deal with the pricing, is it, that could be greater, it could be less.
And it was approximately fifty thousand for next year then?
Correct.
At five fifty divided out over the, the life that was still on.
For ten years, yeah. Correct. And it doesn't extend the life at all, it's the same ten years that are out there now, just refinanced at, at a different rate.
So we're not adding another year?
Negative.
I'd like to make a motion, be it hereby resolved, that the North Branford Town Council adopts the attached resolution authorizing the refinancing of bonds originally issued in two thousand ten in its entirety. Further, it is resolved that the firm of Roosevelt and Cross, based on their proposed, proposal dated March sixth, two thousand eighteen, is awarded the refinancing. Lastly, the treasurer finance director is instructed to report back to the town council the final pricing and corresponding savings after the issue closes.
Second. Discussion?
Is this all the wording that needs to be done?
Right, that, that, that first sentence is the key sentence, exactly, in its entirety, that's got to be the plus in there, but-
Okay, so we don't have to come back and do anything?
I read it by, and that was the, that was the, their word.
Okay.
Uh, Anthony, just real quick, I'm looking at the debt service on this, that we were graphing.
What page on it?
Uh, eighty-four.
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 Okay. So at that, at that estimation, it was five hundred and sixty-eight thousand of cash flow savings, uh, in those years that are being refinanced.
So we're, we are refinancing seven years? Is that what it looks like?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
That's what's remaining on that?
On that particular bond sale, yeah.
Okay.
The current debt service includes our total, total debt service package, the, the, one that's being refinanced is the two thousand ten Series B.
Okay.
And again, the five sixty-eight is merely an estimate based on the, the day that that illustration was done.
Right, okay.
So by us doing this, Anthony, what does our bond counsel or, like, what's their cut out of the deal like this?
Um, good question. If you turn to-
And is that shown in our overall savings?
Yep, that's factored into the five fifty. If you look on page eighty-eight, you'll see, um, source and use of the funds, cost of issuance seventy-five thousand dollars. That's for the bond counsel, that's for a financial advisor, that's for the bond rating, that's for the underwriter, um, verification fees. The underwriter's discount, the thirty-seven you see there, that's their fee, where that three point nine nine basis comes in, so total a hundred and twelve thousand costs to do it. And that still brings us to the five fifty plus or minus of savings, when all is said and done. Bond counsel typically is forty to forty-five, sometimes fifty, financial advisor is probably fifteen to twenty, and the verification agent could be a couple thousand, the paying agent's another couple thousand. The one fif- one twelve in that, in that illustration is, is the estimate of costs, and that still results in, in the illustration of five fifty plus or minus of savings.
And you, you have reviewed this, or?
I, I, yes.
You know, I'm skeptical, because the money we pay people is always real money, and sometimes it's hard to really get your head around the hypothetical money, but this is all, this is all real money, right?
It's legit. It's legit.
Roll call?
Yes. Mayor Judy.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Candelora.
Yes.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin.
Yes.
Councilor Miller.
Yes.
Councilor Rose.
Yes.
And Councilor Zampiano.
Yes.
Yep, again, Anthony, financial report, February twenty eighth, two thousand eighteen.
Financial report, yeah, it's, it's unremarkable, it's, it's, again, the numbers that we constantly look at, property taxes, again, trending higher than last year, ninety-eight point two compared to ninety-seven point seven last year. Total revenue trending higher than last year, ninety-one point four compared to eighty-eight point two percent of budget, and yet, on the, on the expense side, we're still below budget a little bit, sixty-five point two compared to sixty-six point oh last year. No one's over-expended coming into the last quarter of, of the year, and another, another good year in North Branford.
So the three percent difference in revenue, because usually we're not running that much of a difference-
Correct.
On there.
It's the miscellaneous revenue is up there, that's that, that one time, those three items you identified a few months back, there was, that's a, you know, a big number there.
Anthony, I know this is like a month early, but what, what did we, what percent of, uh, tax collection did, did we budget?
I, well, this year was the unusual year, we split it out, because the, the state at the time had the thirty-two mil cap on motor vehicle. I think we went ninety-seven on the thirty-two mil motor vehicle and ninety-eight point six on the personal property real estate. We, ninety-eight point five we do typically, when we average them all together. This year was kind of bifurcated the way the state had it set up, um, in the nineteen, in two thousand seventeen, eighteen.
But the town has, our, our town's taxpayers have a history of, are we hitting a hundred percent?
No.
Were you hitting ninety-nine percent?
No, again, don't confuse, this is a budget, and the, the tax collection amount is a, is a floating number, as people get additions or deletions off the, off the tax roll. So the forty million, five fifty, five eighty, you see there, is not what the total tax bill out there currently is. That varies as people have, you know, new things come on, things get cut off, things like that correction, so we average about ninety-eight point six percent of total collections, which, which is good in the state, I mean, they're-
So we can't bump that in our budget? We wouldn't want to.
I wouldn't want to go too crazy. I mean, I think we went as high as ninety-eight point seven one year, because we were kind of like, had some issues, but, and we're pretty close to that, but to be comfortable, ninety-eight point five, ninety point six is, is a good number.
Anthony, what's the supplemental, I forgot, the supplemental?
Supplemental, that, that's, that's really a guess, because you have to figure out, you're trying to guess, who's getting a new car in the January, so you're, you're doing the budget now. Those bills go out in January of two thousand nineteen. Who's going to get a new car a year from now, more than a year from now, almost, you know, so it's kind of like a, a, merely a guess. Uh, you know, we use three hundred thousand as an average, last year was four hundred and one, this year it's four thirty. They go out in January, those supplemental taxes- They go out in January, those supplemental tax bills, and again, it's merely a guess, try to figure who's going to get a change in vehicle, could be a new car, could be, you know, a change in vehicle, but primarily...
The supplemental's only motor vehicle.
Correct, correct.
A lot of people got new vehicles.
Yeah.
Thank you. Next is appropriation transfers.
Those strictly are just per the budget, just moving the money. The ambulance, every year is budgeted in the ambulance department, but it actually functions as an operating transfer. Similarly, the self-insurance reserve is budgeted in the insurance department, but it has to get transferred out to the self-insurance reserve fund.
I'd like to make a motion that the North Branford Town Council hereby approves the following appropriation transfers as recommended by the town manager and the Treasurer Finance Director. It's a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the ambulance and thirty thousand for the self-insurance deductible.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mayor Judy.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Candelora.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Counselor Zampano.
Yes.
Since the self-insurance was on this appropriation transfer, can we get a report on our budget stuff as to exactly how that's going?
And I know we haven't asked for this in a long time, police outside work, can you give us a?
Police outside work? Sure.
What's owed?
Sure.
I know we haven't done it since the last time you did it.
No, certainly. And the self-insurance deductibles on this is if we have like a claim, it's a five thousand dollar deductible, that's what this covers, that's what the self-insurance claims are. Or if we have a small thing, if somebody has an accident with a police car, it's only a thousand dollar repair, we take it out of this self-insurance reserve, that's what that pot of money is for.
So it's not self-insurance?
Not medical insurance, exactly.
Okay.
It's the, it's the claims before it goes into the insurance company or that five thousand dollar deductible we have on property claims, things like that, comes out of that pot of money. I can get that for you too, I'll give you the number what's in there.
Yeah, I would like...
Well, the medical insurance as well.
We want the medical insurance to see once, how that's going.
So moved.
Second. Right on top of Allen. Discussion. Roll call. Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Candelora.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Counselor Zampano.
Yes.
Okay, next item, citizen statements and petitions.
Part of Milltown Avenue, I'm glad you guys voted to keep the green, can we start calling the new town green, because there's not much green left at the Congregational Church. I mean, if you bend over to read the mine event, you might get hit with a bumper. It's a perfect thing to happen there. Every time I go by there, it's just nice not to see a building or, the area is so overwhelming anyway, you've got twelve lanes at the top of the hill trying to get into three to two to one and go out Route eighty or go down twenty-two or go down one thirty-nine. It's just a super-duper busy area anyway, and I was trying to think, not being an engineer like Kurt or anybody, how would you ever, if you made it a business, how would you even get people in and out of there? I mean, you could almost only turn right if you came out the old driveway, if you tried to go left, you're going to get killed. So, I mean, it's not business-friendly, and I think we do need open space down this end of town, because you're so choked up with traffic, and it's unfortunate because we're a go-through town again. You know, there are killing words in the North Madison's, the North Guilford, you know, they all go through North Branford on their way home, and they're always in a hurry and it's a heavy traffic load, so I think it's the best thing you can do is keep it open space. It looks terrific now that Cherry Hill did a real nice job reseating everything, the natural slope and everything, so I think it really needs to stay open space versus putting a business in there that, we give the EDC a chance, I think they can find a business a better place to go than up there on that hill or whatever, thanks.
Thank you.
And another thing, I want to, again, compliment these guys, I don't think Anthony ever sleeps. I mean, we, that fire that came in Saturday night, these guys were wonderful, I mean, they had that thing under control quickly, they were very professional, and then Florio and the guys, they worked all day Sunday to get it back and our kids didn't miss any school. So again, that's why I like this town, the family pulled together, took a bad situation, corrected it, and the kids never missed an hour of school. At the same time on Sunday, there was another accident in front of the Northridge store. Again, T-bone, you know, the woman trying to turn out of, probably trying to go to Durham, and Anthony and I talked offline about this. And I know if I ask you for a traffic light, it didn't work, the other dangerous intersection down by Cumberland Farms, we almost get shut down, but you almost either need a light there that lets people turn, or you got to send the traffic down over by the library that's going to Durham. Anybody that wants to go to Durham comes down around in front of Northridge store, sits there, gets impatient, and the people flying through town, I mean, on a Friday night when you're trying to get a nice hot pizza, by the time you get home, it's cold, because you can't get out of Giovanni's, and it's just becoming a nightmare. We are, again, that's in the other go-through part of town, and it just, you can't get people to slow down, and the accidents are serious, both cars, I believe, were totaled on Sunday. So there's two lives changed forever, probably in their income loss, and luckily, I don't think anybody got killed, but there were some injuries, I believe. So again, how much more at both ends of towns, and you go to the state or you go to anybody else, and we don't get anywhere, is I believe, right? Do we have any recourse?
I heard the state was looking at that intersection a while ago, and I don't know if they made any determination with it.
My daughter came up with a good idea, send the people right down in front of the old Northridge house, make that a little bit wider, make it two-lane, make it a four-way stoplight there, so the people that want to go north don't have to come south and do a loop around and try to fight the northbound traffic, north and southbound traffic. It doesn't make any sense, and...
At one point, the state was talking about a circle there, so I haven't heard any...
Circle? Oh, that, okay. So that'll be a, almost like a demolition derby in a circle instead of a head-on.
No, no, you're going to see, you're going to see the one at Notchell, Notchell Road and...
Oh, down, yeah, Route one.
And Route one, you're going to see a circle down there, so you'll see how it works.
Oh, I'll see how it works, yeah, well, I'm getting old.
If you ever go to Tractor Supply, you'll see how it works, you'll be entering that circle.
Again, you know, it's just...
When's that circle up for?
They're starting it.
They're in the process of, of, they're incorporating signs, but that's why that was going.
But I mean, is, well, I don't know if we can go through Vinnie as rep, if he has any pull-up to do the DMV or anybody, or, it's just to the point where how much more has to happen?
We could send him a letter, Mike could pen a letter.
All right, I mean, how many more accidents have to happen before something's done? And I mean, these poor people, a real, one of the few nice Sunday days, this last past Sunday, and both their lives are, you know, affected pretty nationally during that day, and it's not the first time, it won't be the last time, you know, the cops could try to put radar in that area, but those people coming through the center of Northridge are just, they want to go home to Branford or wherever, and they're just not going to slow down, so, I mean, and the back road, like he talked about, at one time, there was going to be that back road behind all the businesses and come out by the, what was that road? Montgomery, Mansfield Drive, you know, so if you did your business at all the shopping centers, you didn't have to keep coming back out onto twenty-two and seventeen, and you could get around. But I mean, I'm, I know I'm asking for something I'll probably never see, but I mean, it just bothered me again to see this happen and the people affected, and I, it's not their fault, they just get so impatient, there's no, I mean, if you go to New Hampshire and come to a situation like that, people actually stop and let you out, and you don't know what they're doing until you finally don't, hey, they're...
Well, that's the problem there, is somebody turning into the drugstore lets somebody out, but somebody coming around that car...
Yeah.
Because it's, you know, starting two lanes there, so, you know, that's what happens.
Yeah, I know, it's, so, I mean, we need a fix sometime in the future, but I don't know when it'll happen, so, just some thoughts. Again, thank you again to the fire department, I mean, they were busy all weekend long, I mean, they ran, dropped the boiler job to cover this accident, you know, and just, we don't realize what we have, but we should appreciate what we do have. And again, that's why I like this town. When he said, "Well, nobody's moving out," yeah, because we do care about each other, we treat everybody like family in the town. So, I mean, you're not going to find that in some of these other towns. You're going to pay for it, right? But it's worth it sometimes, thanks.
Thank you.
How's it going? Liam Murphy, Forland Court. I'm a lifelong resident of Northford, I've been here for, since like nineteen ninety-six. I went to St. Anthony's Preschool, Totucket Valley, Stanley T. Williams, North Branford Elementary School, but, you know, since kind of moving on in the professional world, I've actually begun as a financial advisor for Barn and Financial Group, we're based out of Shelton, and we work for all sorts of people, from individuals looking for term life insurance policies, to Fortune 500 companies like Sikorsky. So when I heard about this from the YouTube channel, I heard the proposal come up, it sparked my interest, and as a financial advisor, I thought, huh, it might be a pretty good idea to, you know, see if I can toss my hat in the ring. So first off, I just want to introduce myself, and also let you know that the personal team that I work with has over forty years of an investment experience, we have over a hundred million dollars in assets under management, and my senior partner, Andrew Roselli, is an accredited investment fiduciary, that's some of our background. And so, kind of when hearing this proposal, I thought, you know, it might be a pretty good idea to take a look at the audit, just get some, get some information. And when I read the most recent audit that's on the website, it's from two thousand fifteen to two thousand sixteen, my jaw hit the floor when I saw some of the stuff that was going on in here. And primarily, the first thing that I saw was the investment allocation goal portfolio was for high-yield bonds, sounds great, but another term for that are junk bonds. So to me, that just said, you know, kind of what's going on here, why is the pension committee approving of junk bonds? Doesn't make sense. So I figured I'd take a little bit more in-depth look, try to find the most recent report of their allocations. And what I found when speaking with someone from the finance department today was that the most recent proposal for the investment objectives and guidelines was furnished in two thousand and seven. So eleven years ago before the crash of oh eight. It's pretty concerning, just for instance, one of the things that they want to use as an index is the Lehman government and corporate bonds. Lehman, as you probably know, they're no longer with us, they're not getting used, but that's what's on the most recent proposal. And as a representative for my team, that's a concern that we have, because we don't want to supply a bid or kind of get into any agreement if we're working with something like this. We want to make sure that we have the most up-to-date material. So a question that I have for you is, do we know if there's another bid or another proposal that's been put up since two thousand and seven, and if so, where we can find that so we can take a better look?
This is the latest.
This is the latest? All right. So with that being said, I think one of the things that I'm not sure, I haven't seen the proposal for the pension committee, but this needs some serious work before my team would be even comfortable submitting a bid. There's a lot of regulations in here that aren't even DOL compliant, there's a lot of stuff, it needs a really good overhaul. So I just want to know what the steps for that would be in terms of, you know, if we could provide input or how the pension committee goes about establishing these guidelines for investments moving forward, seeing they are fiduciaries.
Well, I imagine that when a new investment advisor is elected, that maybe one of the jobs we engage them to do is update our policy statement.
Okay. And would that be going like after, once the bid is put out? Would the, would the bid include our proposed...
The bid, it's still being worked on by the council, it hasn't been finalized yet, but I have a...
I know, absolutely.
Right, that can be, that can be part of the work that would help us or update, if that's a little person would help us update policy, certainly.
Okay, all right, thank you very much, that's all I really need to know for now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
So I have to speak as a citizen because I forgot to, I forgot to address this, I really want it on the agenda, so I'll make it, I'll make it short, but Cliff brought this to mind, and so for those of us on this end of town, and with the power out a lot, and I wish Franny was here, but Rose has to go through there, the Route eighty, Route one thirty-nine light, you might as well put five bullets in a six-shooter...
Right, right.
And play Russian roulette.
Yeah.
Because when that, when that's out, we've got the six lanes on Route eighty with a, and it's so stupid, you could just put blinking red lights everywhere, but we have a yellow caution on Route eighty, which means those, those six lanes are going, well, two of them are turning lanes in both directions, so we've got, the people in the four lanes that are just going through, just like he said, they want to get home, so they're going forty-five to sixty miles an hour, they're not slowing down. The people on one thirty-nine trying to get out, they have to, they have to look at two lanes going straight through in both directions and three or four turning lanes, you might turn on to Great Hill, or you might turn on to one thirty-nine, so you just don't get a chance to get, to pull out, and it's insane. And I'm going to tell you this, I'm a very good driver. I'm sixty years old, I've never had an accident, I do not want to go out there and try that. So I was sitting in the turning lane on, one night at rush hour to turn back into one thirty-nine, and I saw people younger than me, so they could hear and see, in the two lanes trying to get out of one thirty-nine, and they chickened out and went right and went down...
You have to go back.
Route eighty, okay? Now, in Branford, over by the truck stop, the town police come out, or the public works come out with four stop signs and place them in the road on all four roads, so everybody has to stop, but I don't know whether it's the traffic authority or whether we have to write a letter to somebody, the state needs to do a better job there, because there have been accidents there and people are going to get hurt, maimed, or killed, or stop having the power go out, I don't know which.
They do it on, they do that same thing on seventy-seven and eighty, I know it's only two lanes there, but they do the same thing, they put the stop signs on a concrete base out there, and you've got to stop.
Right, and you got to stop.
Right.
Because it's not, that's insane.
It's scary.
And, so anyway, I don't know what, Michael?
You have, you have a police commissioner here, so I'm sure he'll take care of it.
Right.
Well, is that, is that town responsibility or state?
Probably the state, but it's a town, I think Branford puts it out on the state road because it's, you know what, it's North Branford residents that are going to get killed. The Guilford and Madison's are just blowing straight through.
It's probably just, it's probably just...
No, Kerry goes straight through.
Hammer down.
Anyway, that's, it is a valid, it's a valid concern, and, you know, you forget about it, but where we've had the power off every week for, you know, and maybe tomorrow too. It's, it's bad, so.
Well, it's probably just something that has to be a reminder to the police department to, you know, if there's a power outage and there's problems like that, then...
We got to address it.
Yeah, it should be, should be brought up.
Even if it's the four stop signs.
Public Works should be contacted.
Right.
And, I mean, it's easy solve, police see the power outage at a major intersection like that, call Public Works, get those signs, I know we have those signs.
Right.
Those signs are, they're put up at Forest and eighty when the power was out, for a few days there, so I know those signs are, exist.
And you know what, I got to tell you, when there's four stop signs, it's like you're in New Hampshire, everybody takes a turn.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's amazing, but boy, when there's not a stop sign, try and get out, so.
Okay, that's all I have to say.
Good point.
All right, motion adjourned, we want to have a non-meeting after, quick, with the town manager and town attorney.
Okay.